Happy New Year, welcome to Burlington City Council Meeting Number One of the new two-year term, January 3rd, 2012, at the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Time for a roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambe?
Here.
Reed?
Here. Thank you. This is the time set to make nominations for the office of Mayor for a new two-year term pursuant to the City Council. Are there any nominations for Mayor?
I would like to nominate Jim Davidson.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations for Mayor? Are there any other nominations for Mayor?
Well, actually, Jim, I-
Are there any other nominations for Mayor?
No. I move that the process be closed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any roll call for that?
Yes. Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we need a nomination. Actually, we're going to do an election. We have an election first, correct?
Right.
No, we have to do an election.
Kathleen has ballots.
Good heavens. Pretty serious.
Yes, it is.
It's got to be efficient.
It must be a new year, everybody looks so happy today.
Weather's nice. No.
The enthusiasm is overwhelming.
Should be on, what, Thursday, 50 degrees?
Fifty degrees.
Could go over soon.
Yeah.
Just need to write your name and then who you're voting for.
Okay.
Your name and who you're voting for. Your name and who you're voting for. Your name and who you're voting for.
Okay, I have Chris Reed voted for Davidson. Jim Davidson voted for Jim Davidson. Shane McCambe voted for Jim Davidson. Becky Anderson voted for Jim Davidson. And Bob Fleming voted for Jim Davidson.
Great, Jeff.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Now, we need a motion to approve the election. Is that correct?
Yes.
Kathleen, I want to make sure I'm doing this right.
I'll move that, whatever it is.
I'll second that movement.
Move to approve the Mayor for a two-year term.
Yes.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second.
Shane.
I second that.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Next is swearing in of the new Mayor.
Sure. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
Aye, Jim Davidson.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of Mayor.
The office of Mayor.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
That is fair.
Here, I'll give you a second. Appreciate it. Give him your white glove. I don't think she voted.
Is that a bad thing?
Thank you. Now's the time set aside for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. I will nominate Chris Reed.
Take a second, Dan.
Okay.
Chris Reed seconds. Okay. Any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll nominate Becky Anderson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, Jim.
Any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I move that be closed.
We have a motion to close.
Second, Dan.
Second.
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Okay, we have an election, two nominations, Chris Reed and Becky Anderson. And, of course, there's a write-in space, too. Technically, there's a spot in here for any council member to make any comments if you'd like.
I have Becky Anderson, she voted for Becky Anderson. Bob Fleming voted for Becky Anderson. Shane McCambe voted for Chris Reed. Chris Reed voted for Chris Reed. And Jim Davidson voted for Chris Reed.
Okay. Chris Reed having three votes. I'm, I need a motion to approve Chris Reed for Mayor Pro Tem for a two-year term.
I'll move it.
Second, Dan.
We have a motion and a second. Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
And now Kathleen will swear in the Mayor Pro Tem. Are we okay so far, Kathleen?
Yes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
Aye, Christopher Reed.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of.
Discharge all the duties of.
The office of Mayor of town.
The office of Mayor of town.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
In and for the city of Burlington, Iowa.
As now and hereafter.
As now and hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
That is fair.
Well, thank you very much, folks. Thank you for your patience out there. Now, we can move to our regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed in our Item One, Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be, oops, I forgot something. I'm sorry, Kathleen, I apologize. Chris, would you have, like to say anything about anything before we go on? There's an opportunity, if you'd like.
I don't know. You threw me on the spotlight there.
I'm sorry. I was supposed to allow a time for the new Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem to say anything, if you'd like.
Honestly, I, I look at it that, for myself, I'm, I'm still just one vote. It's, each and every one of our votes are weighed the same, we're all 20 percent. So, because at the end of the day, when all five of us vote, it's 100 percent. So, it's, to me, it's, I'll do the job best I can, but it's still, it's, all our votes are the same.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for the honor of serving you. We have a lot of challenges ahead, but we also have a lot of good things going on in our community. And so, we have a good two-year time here to grow together as a group and to serve. Yesterday, I was watching the Rose Parade, and one of the bands has their slogan, "Excellence is our standard, not our goal." And I thought, that really applies to us. Serving the community as City employees should be our, not our goal to be excellent, but our standard to be excellent, to be excellent all the time. So, I'd like to have, kind of have that as a focus for the next couple of years. Anyway, now, hopefully, that's the last mistake I'll make tonight. All matters listed in our Item One, Consent Agenda, having discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate item in this discussion. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. On the Consent Agenda tonight are finances and miscellaneous, beer, liquor, wine, cigarette permits, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. Resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Resolution reappointing City Officers, the City Clerk and City Treasurer, in this case. Resolution approving agreement with the I Department of Transportation to provide for safe routes to schools, funds to construct a sidewalk along South 14th Street from Parkway to Kestner, that's by the Blackhawk Elementary School. And we set a date for a public hearing of January 16th, consideration sale of property locally known as 621 North 10th of the city of Burlington, Iowa. And we have a long list of appointments, which I don't think we need to read all of them, Councilman Reed, but perhaps the ones that are not council-related.
Yeah, we'll read the first top six, and the reason why is because after that, it's all about what appointments the, and boards of the council are going to sit on. So, Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, we have Becky Anderson, Bill L., and Anthony Monroe. City Planning Commission, we have Norbert Gaddy, I believe. Renewable Energy Commission, Robert Gard and Keith Jacobs. And Low-Rent Housing, James Edrington. Human Rights Commission, Nancy Schulte. And Animal Hearing Board, Angela Geerd. I don't know if any of them are here in attendance. If you'd like to at least stand up and so we could put a face with the name and everything else.
Angela Geerd.
And that's Keith Jacobs. Okay. Yeah, thank you, folks.
Thank you for attending.
Now, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to have any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I'd like to have the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee removed from the Consent Agenda.
So, that would be the whole appointment thing, okay? Anyone else from the audience?
Item number two under Resolutions.
Okay.
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th.
Okay. Resolution appointing City Officers. Anyone else from the audience wish to remove something from the Consent Agenda? Council, do you have any items you'd like to remove?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. I need a motion to approve items on the Consent Agenda, last those two.
I move the approval, all listed except for the two cited.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll address those at the end of our agenda. Okay, thanks. Tonight, first thing, now, we have a hearing, consideration of ordinance rezoning the property located at 2740 Mount Pleasant Street, Fairway Center, from C2 General Commercial to M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. And our interim City Manager, would you like to have anything to say about that, sir?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Swine Guard Realty is requesting the rezoning. They've got a contract to purchase with the closing contingent upon receiving approval of this rezoning request. And Eric Tisland, Planning Development Director, is here to answer any questions, and I give you a lot more information than I did.
Okay, sir, thank you. Okay, Eric?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a request to rezone the Fairway Center. This includes everything, basically, on the northeast corner of Mount Pleasant Street and Roosevelt Avenue, except for the Jet Stop gas station there. And it is rezoning from C2 General Commercial to M1 Light Industrial. There is M2 Heavy Industrial just to the west, on the west side of Roosevelt, and then we did rezon the Sturzings and the warehousing there, distributor there on Roosevelt as well to M1. So, there is some M1 and M2 in the area. M1 does allow mixed use of commercial and industrial, which is what this property is proposed to be used for, is light manufacturing with some retail space and office space as well. So, it is a real mixed use in the area. A couple of the conditions of the rezoning, it does allow also the daycare health clinic, which would be primarily for the manufacturing facility there, but that would be in allowed use as well. Architectural design, maintaining the commercial character of Roosevelt Avenue, it would have followed the same architectural design guidelines of a commercial area. Wouldn't be allowed to, I guess, facade the entire building with vertical metal siding, maintain the commercial feel of Roosevelt Avenue, which they intend to do. And then landscaping, with the parking lot improved and surfaced and new buildings added there, there will be some increased landscaping to meet our guidelines. Currently, the area, as everyone knows, is just basically a sea of broken-up concrete and asphalt, so it'd be a major improvement with this development.
Did you say everything but the gas station? So Casa Fiesta is part of that?
Casa Fiesta is included within this lot, yeah.
Council, any questions for Eric?
I have none.
Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to comment concerning this, this item?
Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. I was just wondering, just for my own sake of knowing, is there a difference in the millage rates for a commercial property versus those of a manufacturing? Is there, is there a tax difference to the city?
The tax difference is based on the use, it's not based on the zoning. So, there is a difference in industrial and commercial properties, but it's not based on the zoning. So, I don't know the exact rate on that. I know there's certain rollbacks, but...
Anyone else? Any comments, Council?
No. Please wait improvement to the-
I have a motion to close.
Second, Dan.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2740 Mount Pleasant Street, Fairway Center, from C2 General Commercial to M1 Light Industrial Zoning District.
Second, Dan.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Council? It's a great idea.
It's good news.
Okay, Kathleen?
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
And then we have one ordinance.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning. The property is locally known as 1740 West Burlington Avenue and 2880 Mount Pleasant Street, from heavy M2, or, excuse me, from M2 Heavy Instruction, Industrial to M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Excuse me.
Second.
We have a sec, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Lutner, do we have anything that we need to say about that? This is our second reading.
Nothing. I believe not. I don't think Eric does either.
Anyone from the audience wishing to comment? Hearing done. Council, are you okay for-
Yeah, I would like, I would like to motion to amend, to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning the property is locally known as 1740 West Burlington Avenue and 2880 Mount Pleasant Street, from M2 Heavy Industrial to M1 Light Industrial Zoning District, as read as following. For waiver preliminary, considerations of adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance rezoning the property is locally known as 1740 West Burlington Avenue and 2880 Mount Pleasant Street, from M2 Heavy Industrial to M1 Light Industrial Zoning District.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for an amendment. Kathleen, a roll call, please.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
And now, we need a roll call on the original as amended.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
We had two items removed from the Consent Agenda. One was a resolution reappointing City Officers for the city of Burlington, specifically the City Clerk and the City Treasurer. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion from the audience. Mr. Scott, you asked for that to be removed.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th. I objected to the same person that runs the Finance Department as being the City Treasurer two years ago, and I'm objecting again this year. You're putting that person in, I think, in a lot of jeopardy, and I'll tell you from experience, in the early 1980s, I got my, I was elected to my first public office, and that was on the school board. And there happened to have been two members of that same school, school board, that ended up leaving office because of their involvement in being treasures for private organizations, and there wasn't a second person looking over their shoulders, and they basically embezzled money. And it happens all the time. It happens in public service, it happens in private service, it happens in private business, it happens in private industry. Don't let it happen. Appoint somebody else to treasurer. There are plenty of accounting firms in this town, and if you picked up the phone and called any one of them and asked them, ask them, they'll tell you, because I did. They will tell you. It's not a good idea to have the head of the Finance Department also the City Treasurer. And any one of them would be happy to take on that position. I called him and asked him. You do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else wish to comment? Council, do you have any comments?
I, I don't know the entire deal on that, but I will say this, I believe you got a point, that everybody needs to be regulated. Thank God for my daughter, she keeps me from cussing when I'm at home and nobody's around. So, I just, I just think there's, it's always okay to have a safety. I'm not saying that there's any embezzlement going on or anything like that, but to, to make sure that everybody's honest, I don't have a problem with that.
And I have a comment, because when I was looking at the city budget and looked at the auditing of the city budget for, I don't know, it must have been the year 2010, that was something that was brought up, I think, in that audit, that at that time, there was no oversight. And I, I kind of think that Doug had answered that, that then he would oversee it, you know, as City Manager. So, I guess I'm wondering if that will be the case when we get a new City Manager.
I think that's probably something we ought to-
But I do remember seeing that brought up in there, that that was a point, too.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. When we get our new guy in, or gal, whatever, we could look at that for sure.
So, would we want to potentially, or can we, I don't know, wait on that for City Treasurer?
I don't have an answer for that. I think someone has to be designated in order for us to do-
I believe you do have to have a City Treasurer designated this time.
We have to have one.
It'll make Mr. Scott any happier. I'm overlooking that part now, not as a financial expert by any stretch of imagination. But there's a lot of checks and balances there, and then the audit does provide for that also. And it is something that was brought up, I believe, the last time. And again, new City Manager in place, that'll probably be addressed. I would almost assuredly would be.
Let's make a note of that, make sure we don't forget that. You won't let us forget it, will you? You won't let us forget that, will you?
I say you know he won't.
Okay. With that in mind, are we ready to vote, then?
Yes.
Yes. Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
And then we asked, or Eric asked for the appointments, specifically, the Comprehensive Plan Advisor Committee. Eric, do you have any, what do you want to say about that?
I just need to introduce him second.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to have a motion.
I have a motion that we introduce the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee.
Second.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Kathleen. Okay.
Yeah, Eric Renteria, 907 High Street. The issue that I'd like to bring to the council attentions on this is that, is that as an outgoing Mayor of this council, I'd like to encourage the, the City Council to perhaps take a broader approach in appointing people to the boards. And this even reaches into some of the other appointments that, that are on here, and I'm just not aware of what that process is. As an example, a person retired or withdrew from the City Planning Commission, I'm not sure how that happens. I'm not sure how that gets out to the public that that has happened. It all seems to, to happen and to be done, and a new person appointed before anybody in the private sector is aware that those openings are even available. And so, you know, I'm, I'm asking the council, one, to take a look at the appointment to the Comprehensive Master Plan, and to consider putting someone who's not an immediate departure from City Council to be a citizen representative on that panel. And if, and if Mr. L. wants to attend, I happen to know that those meetings are open to the public, and he can participate. But I would ask that the City Council seek input from a citizen who's not been involved with council to fill that position. And then, and then perhaps you can also indulge me by sharing with me and the citizens of Burlington, how this process works in terms of openings on the committees, how they are, how their awareness is created as to those openings, and how the average person can find out that those openings are there and subsequently offer to participate in them. I think it offers some benefits. Sometimes it's hard to find volunteers, and sometimes it's simply because people don't know that someone's planning on resigning and that the opportunity to participate exists. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor, I could take the second half of that question. Eric, to answer your question on how we get our, the boards and commissions out there to the public, number one, it's on the city website, and I, I know sometimes that's not the most utilized source, and it's also in the papers, too. One of the things that we do is, we have an application process that, that people fill out, and there's, please check each board and commission that you have interest in serving. Now, during that time, there's a timeframe that, you know, it could be anywhere from two years to three years, for those people to fill those committees and boards. We're starting to do something new as of this meeting, where we're inviting people that, and putting a name with their face, just like some of the people stood up today, and that we read their appointments. One of the things that we, we do at our work sessions is we go over the appointments each and every time, we go over their application, and we talk about it. And so, we just aren't sort of shooting at the hip and just putting people in places. If somebody has an interest for the Animal Board, and there's an opening, we review their application, and we'll appoint them. So, what we're starting to do from this meeting on is also bring them forward so they can introduce themselves to, to us council members, so we know who they are. Hopefully, that answers your question regarding how people apply and how we get that word Hopefully, that answers your question regarding how people apply and how we get that word out there for boards and commissions.
I guess that, you know, I recently completed that paperwork myself and got on a board. The challenge is that when I filled out my paperwork, I came down and spoke to City Hall, and at that time, they said, here's the openings that we have, you know, are there any of these that you would be particularly interested in? There isn't, at least to the best of my knowledge, there isn't a list somewhere that says, here's all the people on all these committees, here's the date that their terms expire. You know, where do you have a particular interest in, you know, you shoot for a board where you have an interest based on knowing when that termination point is. And, and there's, there's just a lack of knowledge that's available. I don't believe that that's on the website. There isn't, to the best of my knowledge, the notes from those committees are not posted on the website. So, there's, there isn't, it's very difficult to learn about what some of the committees do. And so, what I'm looking for is a way to get more information out there about how these committees function, what they do, how you get involved. Because as a citizen, it's a bit overwhelming. It's a bit daunting to go in and say, well, you know, I'd like to serve, but I don't really know what they do, you know?
No, I, I'm not.
And so, you never do. What happens is you just don't.
And I'm not going to disagree with you on that aspect of things. So, so what we may need to do is get that list of all the committees and, you know, start looking through that, and that's, and so.
That would, that would be great. Thanks.
Anything else?
Counsel?
Anyone from the audience wishing to speak?
Do we want to talk about the Comprehensive Plan then?
No, but I would like to say, I appreciate your passion, as well as yours, Angie, that's why you do such a great job with humane society, because you love animals. And I just think we need to make reservations. I just think your passion for the Comprehensive Plan needs to be noted, and I do want to, I do want to recognize that.
Mr. Jacobs?
Keith Jacobs, 1412 Pine, and I wish to speak in behalf of the Renewable Fuels Committee of the city of Burlington. Our goal is energy independence, and there's no reason why we can't attain that in this country. We need to, and we shall. And, you know, Germany is way ahead of us in energy independence. They have put solar roofs on their homes and their businesses, they have put up wind turbines, they are using tidal wave energy, and they're getting there before us. And they have turned their back on nuclear energy because of the fact that it is dangerous. And there's a lot of nuclear waste left over, and we don't know what to do with it except stick it in Yucca Mountain. That's ridiculous. Look out for an earthquake, what will happen there? Anyway, what I'd like to say is that we are striving hard for this energy independence, and that our committee members are very, feel really great about it. And we have, right at the present moment, have proposed in the past, a project for Locken Dam 18, be retrofitted with the hydroelectric plant. Now, as far as we have got the FRC, we have tried to get a license from them. Quincy was turned down on their three dams down there. But we hope to have learned from their mistakes, and maybe we can get our license for Locken Dam 18. The hydroelectric plant will produce 30,000 megawatts, produce enough electricity for 7,000 homes in the area, and we would have to have 24 of the turbines built for it, which means maybe Dresser Rand could get that business if they could bid on it. And that would certainly help Burlington in that respect, too. There would be a lot of construction to be going on, which would help Burlington as well, to have at least some temporary employees around the area to get jobs. And the money that would be poured into Burlington for the goods and so forth that need to be to build that plant. And it would be environmentally friendly. The new turbines that they have developed now are what they call low-head turbine. They only need a seven-foot fall of water, and they got 10 feet of water that flows down the dam over there, Locken Dam 18. And I can tell you this, that the turbines turn to the point where they're horizontal instead of turning vertically, which means more of the aquatic creatures can get through without being harmed or killed. So, it's very envi- very environmentally friendly, and we're not going to get pollution from this. And as long as that Mississippi rolling down this valley, we'll be all right. Other things we have proposed is that we would hope that maybe we can put up a wind turbine for both the quarter Burlington building and provide electricity also for the Mauree water drain. There's a lot of wind comes down through that valley. You'd think that the bluffs would shut them off, but that's, there's, there's a, that just wind comes right down through the valley, and it really provides a lot of good, good power there for wind turbines. If we put up a big one like they did in New London, we could take care of a lot of our electrical needs. The other thing I want to say is that we have, right at the present time, a situation in the Sea of Hormuz over in Mid Asia, over there in the Mideast, in which we're having a problem, of course, as you all know, with Iran. Here we got politics mixed up with big oil. Big oil controls this country, they control Congress. A lot of the congressmen, they're, they're in the hip pockets of a lot of congressmen and women, I'm sorry to say that, but that's true. And we need to stop this. You know, I can understand why we had to have World War II. I can understand we had to protect this country, and I lived through it. But at the same time, we don't need to be going out and fighting for big oil. And it costs a lot of money, billions of dollars to support them. Big oil is not cheap. Even if the prices are dropping right at the present time, they'll be going back up again one of these days. And I can tell you this right now, I don't like wars because they produce nothing but hatred, devastation, and huge deficits and deaths, of course. And our young men and women, our fathers, our mothers, our children, brothers, sisters, et cetera, et cetera. And we've got to stop this. We just have to get the energy independence, and we can do it. We have the intelligence, we have the ability in this country to do it, and we've got to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, anything else? I will say about the Comprehensive Plan Committee, Mr. L. asked to be on there, and we thought it was a good idea that he would have his expertise available to help that committee, all the years that he's put in with volunteering and with the fire department and with city council.
And I wanted to make a comment, too, because I was at that meeting, and Eric, I noticed that you were there, and I felt like anybody who, from the public that was there, they would take input from. I didn't feel that they were held out any differently than anybody that was sitting around the table.
I think that, you're exactly right, Becky, and, you know, I make that point that, that I attended that meeting, that it's open to the public. The, the issue really is one of, of creating a sense of welcome for the public. And, you know, the perception that is created by taking a former mayor and putting him back into that position is one that is, to me, anyway, creates a perception of blocking the regular public out of those opportunities. And what I'm encouraging the council to do, while I understand that he has some expertise, Mr. L. is certainly welcome to attend that meeting. But how welcoming and encouraging could it be if the city council went out and engaged another citizen who's not currently active, who brings some expertise, and says, we're looking for people to come in and get involved with this city council and to do things? So, it's a perception issue as much as it is anything. And, and Mr. L. can donate his expertise, just like I did, and went to that meeting, even though I'm not a part of it. So, it's really about the perception that this council chooses to create, as opposed to, you know, creating that perception that, that, you know, well, he's one of us and we're going to put him in there, because that's, it's all perception.
Well, thank you. I have to disagree with your perception, however. Counsel, you have any other comments?
I have another comment. I, you know, I guess I just feel that going on the committee is making your commitment to be there, and, and I would hope more people would show up like you do, Eric, at those meetings, because I did, I felt like, you know, you, you had just as much input as anybody, and I think that anybody would have. But I feel like those other people probably have committed themselves to be there. And, and I think if anybody in the public, I wants to be there like you or anybody, I think they are welcome to be there. And their input is welcome.
I was just like, say, I don't understand why they just couldn't have made an extra spot without removing Bill. He could have still stayed there, and we could have, we could have added another citizen. To me, let's just get her done. Who sets the numbers that says, we're only going to have 12 people and that's it? If we need 14 to get her done, let's bring in 14. Let's just, it's about getting results, that's where I stand on it.
Well, some of that is grant funded, and could you elaborate a little bit on?
Through our grant application, we identified key groups that we wanted to have on there, and I think there's 13 or 15 right now, which is a very large group. No one's getting paid, yeah, and everyone's welcome to come to meetings, give their input. In fact, there's a website dedicated to the comp plan, BurlingtonCompPlan.com, and you can sign up and follow, go to, see when the meetings are, get email updates on the committee. So, we encourage as much public input as we can.
Further to that, Eric, I was on the radio this week and, and made some PSA-type announcements regarding the comp plan, encourage people to attend the upcoming meeting. Would ask that the council make a point of inviting people to attend that very important meeting that's coming up, I believe on January 11th. Getting public input is essential to the success of this plan, and, you know, so I would encourage the council to do everything they can to promote that, on the website as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? Do we have a motion to approve appointments? Is that what the motion reads, or have we approved everything?
I think it's the Comprehensive Plan, but, but it should be appointments.
Motion to approve appointments.
Second straight.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no other comments. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. This is the time set aside for comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the audience that has a comment?
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th Street. Congratulations, council members, new council. I'm real happy to see you all there. I'm going to start you off with a challenge. The last council couldn't handle it, and the council before that couldn't handle it, so let's see, see how you guys do. Mason Meadows Development on Mason Road between, including Cambridge and that other street, Winchester, or whatever it is, has not built all their sidewalks yet. And I asked previous city manager why, and he says, I asked him four years ago this coming May, and he said, I've been meaning to write him a letter to find out. Six months later, I brought it up again, and he said, I've been meaning to write him a letter. So, then I started bringing it up at council meetings and public meetings. And I, you got an answer to that already?
Are you done?
Because I'm really fired up about this. I want, I want them to know why I'm fired up. You know, Burlington has a tax abatement program. The reason the levels of the tax abatement program are where they're at today is because that developer came forward and says, hey, guys, how about, let's increasing that, that amount of tax abatement? And I was all in favor of it, still am today. I wish they'd have made it higher. I tried to get them to make it higher. It's one heck of an incentive to get people to build in the city of Burlington. You imagine building a $150,000 home and what that would mean in, in over a three-year period of 100% tax abatements on a $150,000 home? That's big bucks. It's about $13,000, I believe. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money put in people's pockets. That's an incentive. That was the incentive they were using to get people to come in. Now, the incentive for the developer was, it's also in an enterprise zone. And what that means is, you get all of your state sales tax that you pay on materials refunded to you in a cash payment that goes in your pocket, that's cash money. Now, if you look at all the houses that they build out there, and you take one of them at $150,000, and you take what the material cost is, and take 5% of that, you'll find how quickly that adds up to about $300,000. That's an incentive for them to build, but they have to build the project right. When it's not done, when it's not completed, then we look like fools as a city. We were entrusted with that enterprise zone. We were one of 10 communities in the state that was entrusted with that enterprise zone. We have a local sitting committee, as well as a state committee to go to, to, to discuss the successes or failures of this, and right now, it's a failure. Every house is completed. Every house has a certificate of occupancy. What that means is, the city has no iron to go back against the developer and say, you've got to do this, unless possibly there's a bond that I don't know about. If there's a bond, then we can go back, we could build them ourselves and go against the bond for the developer. But I would hope if that happens, that we don't deal with that developer any longer. The developer should go forward on his own, and we should make that statement. We did across the street, if you look at Cambridge Street, going back to the Messiah Lutheran Development, there are sidewalks on both sides of that street, and there's not a single house there. It's because that's what was required by our ordinance, the same thing that's required over there. I've been pleading, I've got angry, now I'm mad, and I want to hear that you got results, Mr. City Manager.
I'll put it, it's in the works. We had to go outside, get a different law firm, but it's in the works, what I can tell you.
There you go. That's too bad. It's too bad. Why was the certificate of occupancy issued? That's the question that you need to ask, whoops, I broke, ran your mic. That you need to ask, that you need to ask your staff. You need to find out who issued those, and they need to be corrected. Not just some dumb slap on the hand, but they need to be corrected. They need to know that this council means business. You know, Jeff Healan worked so hard when he was on city council to get a stormwater ordinance put into place, and he was finding successful. And it's meant an awful lot to an awful lot of people in this community. And without that, well, used Mason Road is one that didn't work very well. With this new, with this new school that's going in, they, they now have 54, I think it is, 54 drops on that property to take on stormwater. That wouldn't have happened without the Stormwater Act, we, the ordinance that was passed, it was due to Jeff, Jeff Healan's efforts. It's the same way on sidewalks. There's a lot of councils that come before you, came before me, and worked very hard to determine what this city wanted. If you look in the Comprehensive Plan, it says the same thing. We want sidewalks in this community. And when we have a developer that's supposed to be putting in sidewalks with the development, then they should be doing it, marching lock-in step with the properties that they're developing. And they should not be allowed to have a certificate of occupancy, or we need to bond heavily on them so that we know that we've got one.
Thanks.
I'm not done yet, sir.
Oh, you got some more? Okay.
I've got, I've got a couple of other things for you. 16 years ago, when I first took office, I didn't know, have a clue what I was doing, even though I'd served in public office before, didn't have a clue. It took me probably six months before I even knew what an agenda was. And I'm not exaggerating, I was clueless. But one thing that helped me was that we sat down and, as a council, had a goal-setting session. And that goal-setting session was the council's goal-setting session. And we had one hell of a successful first goal-setting session. And from that, an awful lot got done. One of those things was the Recplex. One of those things was the road that connected Mason Road to Summer Street so that there was a shortcut to the airport. And there was many other successful things that came from that very first one. You guys have that opportunity, too. It's coming up, but it's yours. It's not the staff's. At some point, we got into a position to where our leader of our goal-setting session first leads the staff in a goal-setting session. And then those are presented to the council just before your meeting. Those are for you to peruse. Those are like putting this hook in your nose and leading you around like a bull. And don't think, I don't think that's serious. There were two council members, when I sat on that, when they first done that, that didn't bring a single goal to the table. Not a single goal. They didn't talk to a single citizen. They didn't talk with their fellow council members. They took that list and picked off that list. That doesn't make you a leader, it makes you a follower. You're, you're walking behind. You're walking behind the staff. You people are the leaders of this community. Take that opportunity, stand up and lead this community. Don't be led. And the first thing you do is you set your goals, and you say, here, staff, how are we going to get there? They're the ones that develop the action plans. I just about fainted when I heard the leader of this, of our group, the one putting on this, when he said, the staff also wants an action plan from you on how you're going to achieve these goals. I just about flipped out. I thought, wait a minute, who's getting paid here? Who's the leaders of the community? I sure hope it's you guys. I'm putting my faith in you. You're going to get a lot of emails from me until you quit responding to me. Then I'm just going to send emails to those who respond to me. And unfortunately, it boiled down to just one person with the last council that responded to me, even though sometimes there wasn't an answer, it was just me running off the mouth, and I just, I just had an opinion, and he'd still write back and say, thanks, Tim, got you, you know. Y'all want to hear that? And I want, I want other citizens to know they can do that, too, and get a response. One other thing. City manager, personnel issues are the city managers to deal with. Absolutely true. But there's a policy, a policy manual that needs to be followed. And that policy, that policy manual is endorsed and adopted by the City Council. It's not written by the staff and approved by the staff, and all decisions within that are made by the staff. That, those policies are yours. They're the council's. They're the communities. They're in our book of ordinances. They're not in our book of ordinances. They're, they're regulations that are written, and it's for the, for the staff to follow. It's not for them to pick and choose what they want and don't want. And again, take back City Hall. The citizens want that, I want that, and I know you want that, too. Take back City Hall. It's yours to deal with. Best of luck to all of you.
Thank you, Tim.
You're in a tough position, and I'm going to have my foot so far up your butt, if things don't get done this time, you're going to know it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Anybody else from the audience have comments? Yes, sir.
Stan Strad in 2009 Chandler Drive. Got to eat the pile of Tim, he's tough.
Yes. I attended the swearing-in of our two new council members the other evening, and we had the work session afterwards. I was disappointed how that was set up. I don't think there was any consideration, gave it to the new council members. You put their chairs out here in the front where their back was to the audits and the TV, and I thought you made the assumption that if we have this on television, that's where your folks are going to be sitting. I don't think that's right. I see nothing wrong with the way you're sitting right there. Still be televised. You can all have your say, we can all see you, and I like looking at you. Thank you.
Thank you. We were, just, just for information, we were experimenting with different ways to do this, and we haven't determined exactly what we want to do yet, but...
Sort of like we're experimenting with the stand in the front, instead of off to the side. Do you like that better?
I wore this for you.
Oh, wow.
That's where, that's where I got the, that's where I got the look in.
Any other council, community members, members of the audience have comments? Mr. Jacobs.
Keith Jacobs, 1412 Pine. I admit, I don't know as much as what Tim is talking about there, but I do think that we should have that tax abatement. Years ago, and correct me, Tim, if I'm not correct about this, but I think that when we had, we had tax abatement back in the 90s, and we built a lot of new homes in this community, and it paid off in the long run. I'm sure we got more taxes back than what we ever put out in monies to get these homes built and so forth. And another thing I like to complain about is, why don't we annex Spirit Hollow for crying out loud? I know we have to provide services when you annex another residential area like that. Of course, we have to put out water, sewer services, police, and fire protection, but just think, there was something like 70-some homes or lots down there that had been filled with homes that were, cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to build, and/or some of them were half-million-dollar homes, and I heard some of them were even million-dollar homes. Now, why is it that we would get a lot of property taxes back from that, that community down there if we just next them? I mean, yes, I know we'd have to have an outlay of money first to get all the services down there, but I think in the long run, it would pay off. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other members of the audience have comments? Seeing none. Council, any comments?
No. I look forward for the next two years, and, you know, I think we're going to gel together as one and move forward.
Mr. Lutner, you have any comments?
No, sir.
Just want to mention that we currently have 50, I think, yeah, Beth said 50 applicants for our new city manager position. Boys and associates have been conducting preliminary phone interviews, and a week from today is the deadline for applications, so we'll be proceeding apace shortly after that. Okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second that.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
We are adjourned. God bless you all, and God bless Burlington.
I have to go. Clock is too late, you think?
I think.
Is it too late?